If I could have everybody's attention, please. We're going to start the board meeting shortly. If everybody would kindly get to your seats. All of you standing over there, we have plenty of seats. Please have a seat.
Good evening, thank you for being here. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:04 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scravano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Is Rod here tonight? I don't see him. Okay. We will now recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. And Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, board members. This is always exciting when we have a house full of not just student athletes, but some of the recipients of our RU pathway. We are very excited when we can fill this place up with parents and teachers and coaches and all the loved ones who came here to support them. So, always exciting. First up, we're going to talk about the Rockford University Education Pathway. Rockford Public Schools offered 20 seniors the opportunity to continue in the education pathway at Rockford University in the fall. Tonight, all 20 of those students have committed to continue their education for a fraction of the cost and work toward teacher certification. These students are not only our graduating seniors, but they are our future teachers in Rockford Public Schools. Thanks to this partnership, they will do their student teaching in our schools and they will have priority placement for available teaching jobs in RPS 205 when they receive their degree. If hired, they can work to receive a master's degree in urban teaching from Rockford University, wait for it, for free.
All right.
Congratulations to these students. We are thrilled about your investment in education and your investment in the Rockford community. Please join me in congratulating these students for their accomplishment and also thanking all their parents and loved ones and supporters who are here with them this evening. Everyone.
Congratulations, way to go. Great job. Congratulations. I'm very excited for you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Great job. Looking forward to you coming to work for us.
Excited to guys out there.
Congratulations. Great job. Very excited.
Excited about it. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Well done.
Congratulations, guys. Nice work. Congratulations.
Great job. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Looking forward to you coming to work for us.
That's right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well done. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we have now open seating available.
Next up, we have lots of student athletes we need, we are going to recognize. A lot of our high school state competitors are here this evening. Please bear with me. I'm going to get through these as quickly as I can. And if I mispronounce anyone's name, please forgive me in advance. And we're going to go through all of these. First up, we have the ILMEA All-State Festival. Six students represented Auburn High School this year at the Illinois Music Education Association All-State Festival. Lucas Lemonholm performed with the All-State Jazz Band. Ben Lash and Emma Mork performed with the All-State Choir. And Audrey Bernardo and Noah Herman performed with the All-State Honors Choir. Congratulations to these talented students. Way to represent.
Okay. Yeah, you get to represent the whole group. Congratulations. Very proud of you. Okay. Right. Yep. Choir. Yep.
Next up, the Illinois State Theater Festival. Guilford High School students participated in auditions and interviews for collegiate theater programs at the Illinois High School Theater Festival at Illinois State University in January. Students had the opportunity to present their work to 39 universities across the country. Congratulations to the following Guilford students. Celestino Dominguez, Corales Hernandez, Sadie Cruz, Blake Lars, Riley DeBoer, Thomas Kellogg, Macy Montevan, Evandia Pennix, and Sev Morse. Please join me in congratulating these students. Okay, they're not here. All right, moving right along, we have the IHSA State Chess Championship. Chess teams from Auburn, Guilford, and Jefferson High Schools competed at the IHSA State Chess Tournament. Auburn High School sophomore Vincent Doe made Nick Ten and Rockford Public Schools' history this year, winning the IHSA State Title. According to the Rockford Sports Coalition, Doe was a perfect 7-0 on Board One, and he was one of just three players on the top board to be undefeated at the tournament. The state tournament was a great showing for all RPS 205 top chess players. Guilford freshman Jeremiah Davis finished 13th on Board One, and Jefferson senior Daniel Ojeda finished 15th. Congratulations to each of these teams on their downstate success.
Congratulations. Great job. Well done. Amazing. Congratulations.
I see their coaches are in the building. Give it up for the coaches. They've got the Jeffersons.
Great job. Great job.
Congratulations.
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 Yeah.
Next up, IHSA Boys Bowling. East High School senior Brandon Folk and Auburn High School junior Matt Segal bowled well enough at the IHSA Boys Bowling Sectional Tournament to advance to state-level competition in January. At the state tournament, Matt Segal finished 14th. Congratulations, Matt. Matt, are you here? Matt! Some relation there.
Can't take him out in public or anything.
IHSA Girls Bowling. Guilford High School's Girls Bowling Team finished fourth at the IHSA Sectional Tournament, while East High School junior Tegan Peterson and Auburn High School freshman Caitlin Bannister both made it to the tournament in individual play. At the IHSA Girl State Bowling Tournament, Guilford took ninth as a team. Congratulations, Guilford. Girls bowling, Guilford. Come on down.
Great job. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Wonderful job.
Congratulations. Next up, IHSA Scholastic Bowl. Earlier this month, Auburn High School Scholastic Bowl team won its 17th consecutive sectional tournament for their 17th consecutive trip to compete in the IHSA State Tournament. On Friday, heading into the final question of the championship round, Auburn and Stevenson High School were tied 390 to 390. Stevenson beat Auburn to the buzzer and won with a final score of 430 to 390. The Knights took second place in the Class II State Tournament, marking Auburn's 17th straight top-four finish. Also earlier this month... Yeah, give it up. Give it up. Give it up. Give it up. Also earlier this month, Auburn finished in first place at the Masonic Bowl State Tournament. This was the Knights' first Masonic Bowl State Championship in 10 years. Next up, the team travels to Atlanta in May to compete in the National Academic Quiz Tournament's national championship. Congratulations on another outstanding season, and good luck at national. The team includes Lilian Chavez... I'm sorry, Liliana Chavez, Codai Spike, Ethan Strombeck, Murad Suliman, and Leaf Varese. Congratulations, and let's congratulate them.
Well done. Great job.
You guys are awesome. Keep up the great work. We're so proud of you guys. Great job.
Great job. Thank you so much.
Awesome work. Great job. Congratulations. Powerhouse right here.
Yep.
IHSA Boy Swimming. Auburn High School's Mitchell Johnson qualified for the IHSA Boy Swimming State Tournament in two events, the 100-yard breaststroke and 200-yard individual medley. At state, he finished 26th in the 200-meter individual medley and 28th in the 100-yard breaststroke. Congratulations, Mitchell Johnson. Is Mitchell here?
Yeah.
All right, up next, we have IHSA Girls Diving. Guilford High School senior Britlin Greenlee took eighth in the IHSA State Diving Tournament in November. She was the first RPS 205 student in nine years to place at an IHSA state-level swimming and diving meet. Congratulations, Britlin. Is Britlin here? That's all right, let's give it up for her anyway. All right. Next up, we have our state wrestling tournaments. Two East High School students competed in tournaments through the Illinois Wrestling Coaches and Officials Association. Bear with me. Madeline Hong-Mung Con completed in the IWC OA Girl State Tournament and finished second in her weight class of 113 pounds. Carter Wyatt competed in the IWC OA Freshmen/Sophomore State Tournament and finished eighth in his weight class of 170 pounds. Both Maddie and Carter are sophomores, and we're looking forward to the rest of their wrestling careers. Congratulations. Are they here? All right, more, a little more state wrestling. IHSA State Wrestling. East High School senior Dontrell Johnson took sixth place in his weight class at the IHSA Class 3A Wrestling Tournament. Dontrell earned more than 115 career wins and finished his senior year with 46 wins and eight losses. He is ranked ninth on East High School's list of all-time wrestling wins and broke the all-time takedown record at East with 191 takedowns. Congratulations, Dontrell Johnson. Is he in the house? All right, we are to the end here. Competitive cheerleading. Guilford High School's co-ed cheer team made history this season by finishing in sixth place in the co-ed division of the IHSA Competitive Cheerleading Championships. The Guilford Vikings are the first RPS 205 team to place in state since the IHSA made cheerleading a competitive sport in 2005-2006. Congratulations, Guilford Vikings. Anyone here? All right. And then last, but certainly not least, Poetry Out Loud. Jefferson High School seniors Hafia Ali and Anna Plankenhorn advanced to the state competition for Poetry Out Loud, a recitation contest after success at the Northern Illinois Regional Contest in February. At state, Haf... Haifa, I'm sorry, Ali finished in the top five, and Anna finished in the top 16. Congratulations to these outstanding students. Are they here? Before I take my seat, let's give it up for all the parents and loved ones and aunts, uncles, grandparents. Let's give it up for all their teachers and administrators and all the people in school. Thank you, that is all.
All right, very good. Great job. Let's give it up for Rod, who's helping with our broadcast tonight. All right. Thank you for volunteering your time. We are now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting. When we invite the public to make comments, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment, thus we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portion of our agenda. According to our board policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The board will not respond to comments at this time. If it's appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. We only have two speakers tonight, so I won't read the rest of that. It's not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Please come to the front, and we'll have a clock on the wall to help you with your two-minute time allotment. We thank you for your interest and your cooperation in our guidelines. Our first speaker is Elizabeth Ulrich, to be followed by Eric Schwurzen. Elizabeth.
My name is Elizabeth. I'm a counselor at Jefferson. I'm a counselor of two of tonight's education pathway honorees. Watching Miracle and Antonio grow up since freshman year has been a real honor. Seeing this scholarship program is a real crowning achievement for our district's academy model. Five years from now, when these 20 students are immersed in their early careers as educators, what kind of teacher contract will they be operating under? How about 20 years from now, when they are in the middle of their career? The teacher contract you are approving tonight is light years ahead of the two we voted down. Well done. I've always been appreciative of my earnings here, but I am concerned about the direction you're going as far as insurance premiums. As this very special cohort of students goes on in their educational careers, will the insurance premium costs they incur continue to grow significantly each year? We're in a paradoxical situation. There is a teacher shortage here in Illinois, but the standards for teacher education programs keep skyrocketing. The new requirement, instead of basic skills testing, has precluded at least one person I personally know from being an educator. She worked hard to get a master's degree, completed all her internship requirements, but could not pass the tests. Please track these students. Keep updated on them as they do clinicals, student teaching, and this new ISBE requirement for video portfolios during student teaching. Keep data on how many have to take and retake the testing required for their professional education license. education license, and heaven forbid if any do not meet those requirements. These young men and women represent so much of what Rockford needs for teaching ranks. Diversity, a group that looks like our classrooms, well, surprise, this is where they're coming from, our classrooms. Why would these bright, dedicated young people choose education in light of the high testing requirements, relatively low starting pay, huge class sizes of 30, 31, 32, 33, middle school and high school students? Don't forget the Tier 2 retirement age of 67. Because they're passionate about being teachers, they have that burn that makes us be, all of us become educators because we can't even imagine being anything else.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Eric Scherzen.
My name is Eric Scherzen. I'm a teacher at Guilford High School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to take a second to talk about the engagement survey provided by K-12 Insight that was a couple of months back. I was very heartened by Mr. Dixon's comments last week about getting into buildings and just kind of seeing, being around the kids, being around the classrooms. And I think that survey really helped to quantify something that classroom-level teachers, building-level administrators have known for a long time, that there's a disconnect between some of the leaders and the ground-level work that happens at our schools. I don't think that disconnect has happened on purpose, not at all. I think it's actually happened as a side effect of otherwise well-meaning initiatives. So, for example, our district is riddled with committees. We've got hundreds of committees. And the committees have, you know, been formed to help facilitate communication between various sectors, the teachers to administrators and administrators to teachers and around and around. But one of the things that happens is those are limited by the people who have the time and the ability to attend those committees. So some of the teachers that are more engaged with students with after-school activities, like chess, aren't able to serve on some of those committees. So we end up losing a lot of really important voices. And I think another side effect is that, you know, a lot of those committees meet here downtown, and they're isolated. So it's really hard to understand the impact of the decisions they're making. Even when I serve on a committee, when we meet downtown, you know, we're throwing ideas around and everything, and the next day, as soon as I'm in my classroom, it's like, wait a minute, that probably wouldn't work so well because I've got kids running down the hall and I've got things going on. So I would just, just based on the comments from Mr. Dixon, I would really love to see in your decision-making and downtown administration, really put a focus on getting people back in the buildings. We've done a really good job establishing a lot of connections between teachers and board. If we can find a way to make that happen where we get you guys into my, into my environment, there's magic that happens there, and I want you to come see it. I want you to see what it takes to make it happen. So please feel welcome anytime.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, I'll ask if there's any board member comments at this time. Ms. McCullough.
You know, we were just commenting actually on the diversity of talent and the fact that we don't just focus on basketball or, you know, the sports, but we're looking at poetry, we're looking at fine arts, music, scholastic ball. So not just us, not just locally, but statewide, the state is offering, you know, tournaments and competitions. But the fact that we're acknowledging them all here is really important to me. I think that we've come a long way in this district, so I'd like to applaud us for that. And I would like to hope that the local news media would do just as well as highlighting those achievements of those students.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Dixon?
Just to add on what she said, Auburn and West had a wonderful concert last week. I would love to see more people out there just to support them. Ellis, Ellis had a award ceremony, which I thought was innovative to, because we always hear the negative things, but we never, sometimes don't hear the positive thing. Ellis had 30% growth. Some of the students that had growth, you, they wouldn't, they're not straight 80 students, but the growth that they achieved, and as they walked across the, as they walked across the stage, the excitement, the energy that was in that building, it was, like I said, innovative to motivate kids that sometimes would never get an award. And so I just wanted to thank the staff for that.
Great, thank you. Any other board member comments? Matt will then move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following: the meeting minutes from February 27, 2018, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, construction bid request log and travel, the RFP for the Wellness Program Administrator, the recurring contracts for AT&amp;T Centrix and AT&amp;T IP Flex Telephone Service, the third addendum to the Consulting Agreement regarding accounting and budget development assistance, the other consent items, including the financial results from February of 2018, the monthly investment report for February 2018, the resolution appointing Michelle Yar as school treasurer, the REA Collective Bargaining Agreement, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. McCullough.
Nine A and B and 10D.
Okay.
And you can take A and B together.
Okay.
Please.
Any others? Mr. Rollins, are you backing on? Okay, all right. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I'll now take a motion and a second to approve items 9A and 9B, which are the AT&amp;T Centrex and IP Flex Telephone Service.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussions? Ms. McCullough.
Come on down.
Here comes Bill. Okay.
So, last week, seems like yesterday, we were here and we approved two other AT&amp;T contracts. One was long distance, I'm trying to remember the other. How many AT&amp;T contracts do we have? The Centrex is the base for all the other ones to work off, or is this the digital piece? I mean, just to give us a, the full picture of our involvement with AT&amp;T, because these are recurring contracts, and so it's good to talk about them instead of just...
Sure. There are four contracts. Last week, you approved AT&amp;T Long Distance and the Master Agreement. So these three, the two you have now and the long-distance contact from last week all work under the Master Agreement. The Centrex contract is traditional analog telephone service, like the line you have in your house. The IP Flex service is the new digital service that replaces the old analog lines.
So on top of having the analog service, we have to pay for the long-distance piece on top of that analog? Correct, because that is for our, for our hard lines, right?
Correct. Both the digital and analog service have usage charges, which was the contract last week, so there are minute charges based on long-distance and local service.
Well, if we voted no on analog, since you brought it second, then you wouldn't need the ones from last week, would you?
That's true.
Just a thought on the ordering of things. Okay, and not opposing to it, I just want to understand why we have all these costs, you know, and pieces. I tell you, I cut the cord this year, so I'm really looking at, at how much we still are tied to our analog services.
Sure. We reduced that number greatly. You'll see in the contract, we've reduced by over 1,000 lines, so...
How much have we reduced it?
By over 1,000 lines. So this contract has 355 lines. We think by the time all the work is done to eliminate all them, we'll be around 250, so there's still some work to do there.
See, that's an important part of the update. Thank you so much.
Mr. Connor.
In terms of the, of the contracts, the questions, so I sent out a number of questions, and it basically stated the two new schools were not on the list, in case anybody looked at the list. And the answer I got back was, they will be needed at both schools, but I guess there's a different provider for Cherry Valley. Is that also true for Lane?
No, AT&amp;T's territory covers Lane. Frontier would be the provider for...
But Cherry Valley will have a different provider.
Correct, they would be in Frontier territory.
Okay. And then the other part was, the contract provides for a minimum of 50 lines, and we can add and remove lines as needed during the contract, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. I think the only other thing I asked, and we don't have to do this on the floor, the one thing I'll say is, I'd asked a question about sort of consolidating the options, and I know the answer was, hey, if you go to the one page. But I think when you look through the contract, it's kind of hard to follow when you look at all the options, right?
It absolutely is. AT&amp;T contract paperwork is terrible.
Yeah. So the one suggestion is, you know, any simplification or summarization of some of those options, I think, would be helpful. That was really what I was coming on.
Sure, those, the options on that contract, some of those are 15 and 20 years old.
Yeah, oh yeah.
They haven't updated that document for us.
Yeah, it's complicated. That's actually kind of my point, is if we have a summary, then we have maybe a better idea of what we've really, what we've really have in the contract and what the follow-up should be. So, okay, thanks.
Ms. McCullough.
So why doesn't AT&amp;T cover Cherry Valley? I mean, they're all nationwide, so why...
They're actually not nationwide. There's territories that are carved out for the telephone companies.
Okay.
AT&amp;T has a large majority of the Rockford area, but when you get into the rural areas, that becomes Frontier. So Jefferson, the old Cherry Valley, the new Cherry Valley are all in Frontier territory.
And that reoccurring contract with Frontier, have we seen that yet? Or is that not this year, or...
I'm not sure when that was last brought. I'd have to look.
Okay.
It's a very small...
We have a contract slog, right, Ms. Holdley?
We do.
Should be on there.
It's a very small contract. There's not much money tied to that.
Well, big to them.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Matt will have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of items 9A and B, the AT&amp;T contracts.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now take a motion and a second to approve item 10D, which is the REA Collective Bargaining Agreement.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Second by Mr. Dixon. Questions or discussion? Ms. McCullough.
Well, we had a conversation, and my understanding was, we'd ask Dr. Jarrett to kind of summarize for us where we are with our contract and what we're voting on tonight, so...
Happy to do that. I think we would start with ongoing conversation about total compensation. That was where we talked about the total dollars and healthcare. One of the big takeaways from the healthcare perspective is the PPO 500 deductible was removed, so now the lowest deductible is a PPO 1,000. And employee, employees are contributing 12 and 1/2% in two different calculation methods over the life of the contract. They're currently at about 7%. And so, so there will be an additional $2 million in contributions during the three years of the, of the contract. The single is staying pretty constant, so one of the objectives was to have single costs stay as constant as possible and just adding the, the cost increases that, but keeping the percentage consistent. In terms of dollar amounts, the contract included lanes and step increases for the next three years. Those are $2.1 million items per year, for a total of $6.3 million approximately. That varies a little bit depending on lane usage as well as what our FTE count is, but approximate numbers there. And then the increases to the base of the contract totaled 1%, 1 and 1/2%, and 2 and 1/2%. The 1% was prorated to the, to the beginning of the first semester. All told, compensation is around $17.5 million for salary, and total investment is a little over $20 million. In terms of savings for the district, there is a retirement incentive that may allow us to achieve larger-than-expected retirement numbers. If we estimate 200 retirees, that would generate about $6 million, assuming a $30,000 per employee spread on retirements, which helps cover a good chunk of the lanes and step costs if we hit those projections. Obviously, that's up to the individual employees to determine how many will retire each year, so that is an estimate. It could be lower or higher than that. Other big takeaways on the student achievement side, I think there is a really powerful investment in elementary schools with an innovation zone concept that we worked hard to develop that provides an opportunity for a longer day professionally as well as with students in exchange for some additional resources. That is something that teachers and faculty in a building can opt into with a 51% vote, so that is a, a way to address schools that feel that they are resource-starved and would like additional time. It's a way for us to target schools that, that need extra support. And I think that is something we're really proud of, that we were able to achieve collaboratively. There's a lot of work about the contra, or the, the calendar, so there is an opportunity now to do, use institute days during the school year. We have four of those and two school improvement days. We can now use those institute days to provide professional development throughout the course of the school year. We, we struggled at times having 100% access to teachers for much-needed professional development by either paying or having people volunteer to come in during the summer. So we are confident that we will be able to put those additional hours in the year and days in the year to good use. We also had a very robust conversation about how we can share common interests about the use of lanes in the salary schedule. We have a practice that is sort of unique where as long as a program is accredited, we would, we would move those through. We look forward to partnering with the REA with our new language to emphasize lane movement that is a win-win for faculty and the district. We have a committee that will work together on that, but the district did obtain some additional authority to, to partner on that language. And other important concepts, I think that's probably a good start. We have some work to do still on differentials that we have committed to do moving forward, and I think that hits most of the highlights. Any other specific areas you'd like me to address?
Any other comments or questions on item 10D? Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the REA Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Abstain.
The motion passes as six yeses and one abstain.
Thank you. We'll move on now to the closed session consent agenda items, including the appointment of Michelle Yar as a 12-month Chief Financial Officer, the resolution authorizing dismissal of non-tenured administrators, the HR organizational report and addendum, and the student, closed session consent items for student discipline. Unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4165 is expelled for the remainder of this school year and the entire 2018-19 school year. Student 4166 is expelled for the remainder of this school year. And the four-day suspension for student 5009 was affirmed. The following EIA's were given for students 3473, 3478, 3483, 3487, 3491, student 3492, 3493, 3495, 3496, and student 3497. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session items?
So moved. Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. And please, any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? I lost my place there. All right, we'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the closed session consent items.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is superintendent's report, Dr. Jarrett.
You know, I would really just like to focus my remarks and keep them very brief on what we had the opportunity to celebrate at the beginning of the meeting. I want to thank Earl Dawson Jr. and the communication teams for bringing our winter, for bringing our, our winter sports group. It's just, to see that mix, as Mrs. McCullough pointed out, of all different types of activities and co-curricular experiences being recognized is one of the best parts of this job. And when we can see such a wide variety of talent represented, it really is enjoyable to do, and I appreciate the work that goes into the families, the coaches, the teachers, the students, and ultimately our team to make sure we invite them here and are here to celebrate them.
celebrate them. And I also just want to tell you how gratifying it is for me to see our first class. In our country, we make a big deal about people who sign and declare, and sign a letter of intent to play college football or to play college basketball. I know that was my dream growing up, is I wanted to sign a letter of intent to play college basketball. I fell a little short and played Division III and signed on to become a teacher. And I think it was pretty awesome to see 20 of our students essentially sign their letters of intent tonight to be part of our future teaching force. They were a strong representative sample of our community. This is something I really want to credit the entire HR team for not only delivering a 20-person class. We only had 11 last year in our first year. We had a kind of a short start, but for making a big deal out of it, because this is a big deal. This is every bit as important as who Alabama has signed for their left tackle. I'm pretty excited about knowing that we have this group of future students that are going to be teaching, and I'm really happy we made it a big deal, and I hope with not only this, but other future academy pathway concepts, we continue to make a big deal about what our students go on to do for college and career. This is exactly what high school academies are supposed to be all about. So kudos to the team for making it happen and for those students and their teachers and their faculty and staff that encouraged them to be part of that work. This was a big day to see a lot of work that went into that first class, where we could really celebrate properly what a wonderful achievement this is. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Ms. McCullough, Ed Committee?
Ed Committee has not met since our last meeting.
Mr. Rollins, Finance Committee? Has met.
Finance Committee has met. We met in this room last night at 5:30 PM. We had a pretty full agenda. We started by having a review of healthcare costs in the district, and they really sort of took us back to fiscal year 2011. So the good news is that since 2011, we have beat the medical trend rate. Our average increases per year since fiscal year 2011 are a little over 2% per year. We did have one large year, about an 11.6% increase between fiscal year 2015 and fiscal year 2016. They were giving us the numbers on a per-employee-per-year basis, which is one way you can measure healthcare plan costs. And the question was asked, how do we compare with national averages? So last year, fiscal year 17, we ended up with a per-employee-per-year cost of $14,625. National average, we were told, is between $11,000 and $13,000, so we are still on the high end. We're above the national averages for our per-employee-per-year cost. There was one of the focuses, because they did kind of give us some warnings about the future, and one of the things that we talked about with a focus has to do with prescription drugs, and particularly specialty medications. Now, I didn't ask for the definition, but I think I know what it is. A specialty medication is something that's still under patent, and there's no generic equivalent, which means that the pharmaceutical company gets to charge pretty much whatever it wants. And so they gave us some trend information. So 14 out of our top 25 drugs are specialty medications, which is up from nine two years ago. Specialty medications make up less than 1% of the total scripts that are written. Last quarter, they were 33.8% of the cost, and they're projecting that by 2020, which is in two years, it'll be 50% of the cost. And they said that that's kind of a national trend. So, you know, the one example that was given, that I'll just throw out there for you, just so you know what we're talking about, we have one individual who's on a drug, which is $340,000 a year. And I like to, I do like to put things in context, and I was thinking this last night. I didn't say it, but I'll say it tonight. You know, we don't have a printing press in the basement printing out dollar bills. We have a closed system, and the money is coming out of Fund 10, which is education, and for $340,000 a year, that is basically the average cost of five teachers. So that's the opportunity cost here, is that as a society, is what we're saying, is we can pay for one drug for one person, or we could have five more teachers, or five more counselors, or five more instructional coaches. You know, one of the things that was a little disconcerting is I asked our consultant, so what are we recommending going forward to address this? There really is no recommendation. It is what it is. This is a national issue. It's a national problem. There is really no local solution, but this is the direction that's going to go. So, on that high note, we then moved on to our budgeting. We had two presentations last night, sort of two related presentations. One was from the Educational Services Division, from Ms. Detman, and the other was the School Special Programs SSAL and Athletics fiscal year 19 budget from Dr. Vosberg. And I'm just going to, you know, the full presentations are on Board Docs. I'm just going to pull out some of the highlights and some of the things that triggered some discussion last night. Under the Educational Services Division, you know, some of the big changes under IT, they're projecting or they're budgeting a $1.4 million increase for SMARTboard refresh. So the discussion was that seven years ago, the district made the decision to go to a SMARTboard in every classroom, and currently those SMARTboards have about a seven-year lifecycle. And so what they're budgeting is to do a four-year refresh at one point, approximately $1.4 million per year. So that's $5.6 million total over the next four years to refresh the SMARTboards. And one of the things that Mr. Hall mentioned is that they're not even sure going forward. I think he said that the new units are in one unit. I think the old SMARTboards were in two units, and they think that the SMARTboards going forward might not even have a seven-year lifecycle. So we might actually start having a shorter lifecycle with these newer SMARTboards. And so, you know, the question was asked, what's the academic return on investment for this? And how do we show that? And, you know, it's a good question, and there's no answer, I guess. The decision was made, the decision was made seven years ago to do this, and I don't know how we, it's a lot of money, and I don't know how, as an organization, we look at expenditures like this and figure out, is this really worth the cost? Or is, there's an opportunity cost here, too. Would we be better off spending this money on something else? There are competing, SMART is a proprietary system, and there are competing systems out there, but the problem is, at this point, we're locked into SMART. I mean, we've made a significant investment into SMART. We've made a significant investment in professional development. Teachers have created content on SMART. It would be difficult or impossible for us to move to a different system. I don't think that the fact that we have, in some ways, a practical monopoly affects our costs, because I think we probably buy these off of a schedule, which is negotiated, so I think we're getting the same price as everybody else. So that was a point of discussion, and I'm just mentioning it. Another point of discussion, they're budgeting about $1 million net, once you net out expenses and staff for curriculum, to move forward with our sort of integrated curriculum. I'm not getting that right. Articulated curriculum? What's the phrase? Articulated curriculum? Vertically integrated? Integrated, thank you. Curriculum. And then we're also got a net increase in spending of $1 million for special ed, which most of that's on staffing. And the discussion there was that really what they've, what they sort of figured out in going through this process is that we probably weren't allocating the costs correctly within our budget, so it's really a line item issue. They're just moving money from some other line items over to this line item, because as they were developing the special ed budget, they found that they hadn't really properly budgeted for the existing FTEs. It's not an increase in FTEs. It's not really an increase in compensation. They're just figuring out that they didn't budget internally within our budget. That's it on the Ed Services Division, or those are the highlights. Again, I would urge you to take a look at the presentation on Board Docs if you want to look at the whole presentation. On the School Special Programs SSAL and Athletics, part of that conversation was about the, what is referred to as the building budgets. We create our building budgets on a per-pupil basis. Currently, we're doing that at $85 for elementary, $95, sorry, $85 per student for elementary, $95 per student for middle, and $150 per student for high school. It's been at that number for quite a few years. The question was asked, where does that number come from? And the answer really is, it's the number that they've been using. And so, again, it's, again, sort of the academic return on investment question. Instead of just plugging in a number because it's a number that we've been using, it would be nice to see us start asking the question, is it the right number? How do we get to that number? Is it the right number? There are some, again, new requests for additional spends in this budget as well. They're budgeting seven additional elementary school assistant principals at $630,000, and that's partly because the schools, the elementary schools are getting larger with the facilities plan, partly because they see some elementary schools that they think may need some additional help. They're budgeting three aspiring teacher stipends at an aggregate of $51,000. And then there's one data position on there at $70,000, but with the notation that that's cost-neutral. And I didn't ask the question, but I assume, I think we had somebody resign recently, and I assume that that's, we're just backfilling that position?
Close. We had somebody transfer to the HR department.
Okay. All right. And that's it for my report, unless, Mr. Dixon, you had anything else to add, or if anybody's got any questions?
Hey, thank you. Mr. Connor, the Ops Committee?
The Operations Committee met on Tuesday, March 6th, at 6:30. Before I get into that, I hope people will indulge me on one thing, because I didn't realize both Mr. Dixon and Dr. Jarrett would bring up this topic, but they both commented about what I'll call, in the industry, is called moments. Mr. Dixon talked about Ellis and the pride of the students when they got recognized for their achievement, and Dr. Jarrett certainly had the same comment about the teaching pathway. And my comment is this, that at work, we're reading a book, and I don't usually say much about this, but there's a book called Power of Moments. It's by Chip and Dan Heath, and it talks about the structural basis and why the power of moments is so important. And it's, you know, it's something that we're actually paying a lot of attention to at work, and it sounds like the district is, and so I really have to say that, kudos, because I figured that you all had gotten the book, but just for everybody, those of you that are in management or in corporate life, it's really, it's a powerful trend, so really, kudos to everybody. I think it's a great thing. All right. So back to operations. We met, as I said, on March 6th, and the first line item that I'll mention is that Mrs. French brought up the Director of College and Career readiness about a credit union at Guilford High School, which, again, a really good thing. There's a lot of logistics behind it, but essentially, it's an educational opportunity for the kids at that school, and hopefully, as a pilot, we'll see it replicated elsewhere. But I really wanted to say that the credit union has done a great job in partnership with the district, and that's a really good model, and as an educational delivery for the kids at Guilford, and I'm sure that's a pilot that will extend, was a good thing and got nothing but really good comments from the committee on that. The other items are standard reports, the facilities master plan. We're 80% in terms of paid already, so that that schedule is really going ahead at a good pace. And the committed, so that was 80% is 202 million, and we are committed to almost 13%, which is another almost 32 million. So we're really starting to wind down things, really, probably by this time next year, when we start to wind down for the other new schools. So the facilities plan is in good shape in that standpoint, and I think is something that we need to talk about as a board on the next version, when we would start the planning on that. I think that's an important topic. We've had a lot of things brought up. And speaking of that, the next was a lifecycle report on the HVAC, and there are some rather large costs associated with that. Air handling units, which are the larger units, are about 282. Roof units, about 115. If I remember Mr. Schmidt's numbers, that's roughly 90% between those two, and it's something like almost close to 20 million. And one of the options he was giving is that we could spread that out over time, but we're still talking about a big dollar amount. So, I mean, when Mr. Rollins brought up on the various factors on budgeting, what I would say is, we have some very large costs, really the pipe in the West, the situation on the HVAC, so we have a lot of things to plan for, and I think there's a lot of serious work on the financial side that we really have to look at. The next thing, and I assure you, this is everybody's favorite topic, was the custodial update, yay. And what I'll say is, there's two updates on that. First is that there is a new general manager. His name is Jeff Jacobson. He has 25 years of experience. He did spend a little time afterwards with the committee. Both Mr. Siegel and I did talk to him, and so we're hoping that a new direction is set there. But to give credit to administration, there is, from my point of view, an improvement. So what we're committing to is this, Mrs. Ellis now has a new evaluation form, and on that evaluation form, it's based on feedback from two groups across all the buildings. One is from the principals, who will represent everybody but the teachers, and then the other is for the building champions, which, of course, represent the teachers. So what this means is that, I think from a feedback standpoint, the importance of that is that evaluations will be done over time, based both on the principals and the teachers. So I think it's very important for the teachers to really get involved with this and make sure that the feedback reflects the situation as they see it in the buildings, and that is something that's, I want to say, and I didn't write down the date, but hopefully, within a month, excuse me, that that new evaluation form would be ready. That was the statement at Operations. So I look forward to that, and again, I really give a lot of credit. One of the things I will say is that the participation in the surveys has been reasonable, but we'd like it to be even higher, and that will help us to track things over time. That form, again, is, all these have presentations that are online in the Operations Committee, so you can see the details. But it is something that I was encouraged by, and we all recognize that it's a difficult situation, but I think that there are steps being done and a lot of specifics around next steps, and so hopefully, we'll turn the corner with the new GM and have a survey that will represent all the buildings. So our next meeting is on April 3rd at 6:30. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Okay, we'll move on then to action items. Our first action item is the contract with Nusella for online subscription services. This was presented by Dr. Wolf. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Connor, second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussion? Have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the item 16A, the contract for Nusella.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to new business, and administration is requesting the board to suspend the rules to consider item 17A, as the deadline for the item is April 1st, and the board will not have another meeting before that deadline. So I'll take a motion and a second to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Connor, second. Any questions? We'll have the coordinator then call the role on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll take a motion and a second to approve the intergovernment agreement bind between ISBE and RPS 205.
So moved.
Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Questions and discussion? Are we getting a presentation on this today?
Yeah, we should have.
Yeah, is there?
Somebody talk.
Yeah, we are presenting the IG8 in front of the board to engage recruiting Spain again. The district had utilized this effort years ago, and we discontinued it last year. We looked at the practice and what the district has done with extending visas for some of those Spain teachers that did come over, which incurred a financial cost to the district. So bilingual and HR met with the ambassador from Spain in October to clarify all of the visa rules, especially under the new administration, and find out exactly what was incurred in that cultural exchange. We were very clear on the three-year exchange. The country of The country of Spain helps us with certification and ISBE, so it's a clean process. And so we again went to Chicago in February with other districts around the state to get more detailed information. This IGA that's in front of you is the general IGA that ISB uses with all of the districts in the state. And that would allow us then to participate with ISB in the recruiting of the Spain teachers. We had focused on Puerto Rico. Right now, our return on investment with Puerto Rico isn't where we need it to be to fill all of our vacancies. Out of the last two trips, we have six teachers. The most recent trip to Puerto Rico, we early offered three of those teachers. One is accepted. The other two are waiting on certification. So we've run into, in Puerto Rico, some certification issues, frankly, some language issues where they're not as proficient in English as we'd like. And so bringing them over would set those teachers up for failure. We've also run into unfortunately, natural disaster where the country was still, 50% was without power when we went to recruit. And so we felt like this approach to reengage with Spain would help fill those bilingual positions that we have.
Questions for Mr. Connor?
Well, I had submitted a question. You answered part of it, which is I thought we were committed to Puerto Rico. And I think, so my comment is that we faced a lot of criticism last time we went to Spain for the costs and the setup and the rest. So I thought the whole point of going to Puerto Rico was to help with that, especially being a US territory or Commonwealth, that that would be easier. So I guess the question that I've got is directionally, you know, are we going to set up criteria that allows this to be a sustainable program? Because clearly, the immersion program at Barber is a great success. And I think clearly, the, from what I've heard, you know, the board wants to support this. But on the other hand, we really have to be able to have an accountability. And it's not the fact that it's kind of gone back and forth. In my own mind, what caught my eye was that, again, it could be just I haven't read up on it enough, but I think the clarity of what we're trying to do and how is it we know in two years? And is this a permanent condition that we're going to be going to those two countries? I mean, what, what is it directionally that we can do to kind of wrap our arms around this, especially, and I can't emphasize enough, the importance of the bilingual and the immersion programs here at RPS? So that would be the main concern that I've got.
Yeah, you know, Puerto Rico was our focus. And like I mentioned, right now, we haven't seen the return in our investment on trying to recruit that country, to have some permanent solutions for that. That's what's caused us to reengage with Spain because we are having success with Barber and growing that program and other TBE sections across our district. Those numbers are growing. So in terms of a strategy, it's always going to be recruit locally for bilingual teachers that are certified. And that is, we are fighting with other districts around the state for the same individuals. And so we are going to continually to look at how we recruit our bilingual teachers so that we can support all of our students and then especially the growth of that immersion program.
So a couple of questions, and I appreciate the comments, but when you say return, I mean, again, it goes, in my mind, it goes back to the criteria for that. I mean, can anybody comment on the return, say of doing Spain?
Right.
Given the overhead for that and the rest?
Yep. So typically, when we've been able to recruit Spain, we've been able to bring back four to five teachers consistently that have been with us for three years, that have been high quality teachers. Puerto Rico right now is more of, it's not a for sure thing. So as we go to recruit, one year, we early offered seven individuals and only three ended up coming. And so we haven't had that almost guarantee. Working with the ISBE and going to Spain and they help facilitate the paperwork, the certification, the number of teachers that we're able to bring back, we're going to be able to count on more than what we would be right now in our stage with Puerto Rico.
I don't know, maybe I'm the only one that has questions on this one, but I guess, you know, I'm going to say this, that, and nothing on Spain, I'm sure that there's a lot of good things about the arrangement. But again, I think the part that's sticking in my mind, it's a US territory and it just, I guess it's hard to believe that that wouldn't be, you know, an ideal option. The other thing I'm going to ask is if we are in competition and growing our own is absolutely the number one, and I think we have a good long-term answer for that, again, given the pathway and the rest. But what I'm wondering is, when districts are successful, other than those that are, you know, on the beach in California or Florida, and we can't really do much about that, other than that, you know, what have the other districts done? I mean, do they have incentives? Are there any kinds of particular programs? Is there, you know, helping with student loan debt or, I mean, I'm making it up, but there's, there's got to be reasons that that's successful. So I'm not expecting an answer tonight. I think the only challenge I've got is, you know, again, the word that keeps pounding in my head is criteria. And what are we looking for and what are our options? Because I think right now, the only feedback I'll give is it looks like we have essentially two territory options rather than the criteria and what we're trying to do. And that would be more what I'd like to see the focus on.
Mr. Rollins?
Well, Mr. Connor, you're not the only one who has concerns. And my concern is, I mean, I'll vote for it because it sounds like you need the bodies and this is, this is the way to get them, but that it becomes the easy button. And, you know, this is, this is always going to be a temporary solution. There are three-year visas. So you will, you aren't hiring people who are going to become permanent members of our workforce, who are going to be members of the community. And that may be why it's easier to get people out of Spain too, because they know that it's a temporary solution. And when you're recruiting in Puerto Rico, they're looking at it as, you know, this is a career for me. So I do hope, and, you know, we've had these conversations, when you, when we do new initiatives like trying to recruit from Puerto Rico, it takes a consistent effort sometimes, a consistent years-long effort to get your toe on the door, to hire some people who then hopefully have a good experience, who then report back to their friends, who then maybe start applying or, you know, just so word gets out. And I do understand some of the challenges. You know, one of the challenges we have particularly out of Puerto Rico's climate. So I know, you know, we've had these conversations when we were recruiting down there, we were competing against some of the Texas, the big Texas cities. And, you know, guess what? If you are from Puerto Rico, maybe you'd rather live someplace warmer than northern Illinois. But, and we will, we will always have that issue. But I hope this doesn't become the easy button. I hope we continue to do some hard work to try to find alternatives.
Yeah, we're not abandoning Puerto Rico. Each time we've had a trip, we've taken things back and how to improve. And some of that has come from the actual candidates that we've interviewed. We did take two of our Puerto Rico teachers down this year on our recruiting visit so that they could help recruit and spread the word. So we certainly aren't abandoning Puerto Rico. I still think that should be a focus for us. But as we continue to try to fill the need, this is a temporary solution, but we do continue, we need to continue to work on a permanent one. I certainly agree.
Any other questions or comments? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 17A, the intergovernmental agreement between RPS 205 and ISBE.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mrs. Neary's there. I see you back there. You're going to present our next four items, which are the integrated curriculum resource materials.
Yes, good evening. I am Carrie Neary, Executive Director of Curriculum. And I have four items for you tonight for your consideration. The first item is 17B, Defined STEM. Defined STEM is an online resource for K-5 Integrated Literacy Curriculum. So this will be used in our K-5 classrooms. This resource includes content and skills aligned to all content areas. And it will be customized to meet our curriculum outcomes. The total cost for this resource is $265,000, I'm sorry, $265,763. And we are recommending that the board approve this purchase. Do you have any questions about this resource?
Anyone? Mr.?
Yeah, I was just going to say, can we go through all of them?
Should we go through all of them?
Yeah, please.
That would be great. That would be great. Okay, so I will move on then to 17C. 17C is Core Connections Integrated One. And this includes both print and digital resources for our Integrated Math One curriculum. This is a new course. Integrated Math One is a new course that will be starting in the fall. And it is for, it will be our first course in our high school math sequence. So it's for our ninth grade students and then also our honors eighth grade students. The total cost, $239,772.72. And this is a correction from the original packet. We realized we had the wrong quote. And so we have corrected that. And this, as I mentioned before, this is for our Integrated Math One course at the high school level. The third resource is Picture Perfect Science. This is a print resource with text sets for literacy and hands-on science and engineering activities for our K-5 Integrated Literacy Curriculum. Total cost, $323,043.88. And then our fourth, fourth resource is World Cultures and Geography. This is for our new ninth grade Global Studies course, which will begin in the fall. This resource includes print and digital materials in both English and Spanish. Total cost, $310,501.43. Those are our four resources.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Connor?
So I had a number of questions on this. Now, unfortunately, I also grouped F in with it, sorry.
Oh, okay.
But I, because I wasn't sure how this was going to come out.
Why is an F part of your presentation? F is being presented by our bilingual department.
So you'll forgive me being a layman that I'm going to lump them all together, sorry. I think the total I came up with, not an exact amount, was roughly 1.5 million.
Right.
And, and again, in layman's term, that's quite a chunk of money.
Yes.
And, and I, one of those, since I've been on the board, have been pushing for a curriculum so that we can get a lot of things lined up, including technology. So I'm glad to see some of the progress. But I guess, number one, one of the questions I asked was, I assume the content and educational objectives were reviewed by the Ed Committee on this? Is that true?
We had a conversation about the process in which they achieved this. And that process was to look at the educational objectives as their entryway into making their choices. But we didn't go through specifics on each of the books, no.
Okay. So one of the things I'll say is the content and educational objectives with this much is something, and I said, my comment was, I might have missed it, but I didn't see a summary slides about educational impact versus cost. And I apologize, I thought I looked through that. Then what I said is, some of the questions, and again, I don't pretend to know, which makes, of course, me dangerous, so I apologize for that one in advance. But some of the questions that arose in my mind were, what gaps are we targeting? How do these curricular programs fit the larger growth and achievement goals? And, you know, and I know you all work with this every day, so you probably know this chapter and verse, but, you know, in summary, I'd least like you to address some of this. So again, content, educational objectives, and the impact versus the cost, the gaps, and how this fits the larger growth and achievement. Those were the four basic questions I had.
So what, in terms of the design process and what we use to select our resources, each of our, each of these resources was selected by our curriculum leadership teams, which are teams of teachers led by our content area deans. And they begin by evaluating current resources to see if they will fit our needs of what we are, what our new curriculum will be. In this case, it was determined that our current resources will not be able to support our new curriculum, which includes new standards, especially in science and social studies. And so, and then also a new integrated math model. And then also an integrated literacy model at the elementary level that combines literacy, science, social science, and health all into one curriculum. And so the next step for the team then, for the curriculum leadership team of teachers, was to evaluate new resources that would align to our, our standards and as they are outlined for our new curriculum.
Can I interrupt? I apologize.
Yes.
When you say the word resources, what specifically are you talking about?
So we're talking about either textbooks or text sets, digital resources, print resources, those types of things.
Boy, I don't want to get off on this, but would I assume that most of these are, you know, electronic of some type and that, I mean, and I totally understand, especially in earlier or younger grades, that, you know, physical paper and all that makes a difference. But I'm wondering, in terms of both flexibility and really delivery, you know, what kind of criteria did you go through? Did you say, oh, we're good with it being, you know, half and half, half paper and half electronic? I mean, what, what kinds of thinking process went behind that?
So we brought both digital and print resources to our teacher teams. And a lot of these resources come in both. We have considered going completely digital, but that would incur a cost of additional devices. And so, and we also then, also, we have many students that do not have that digital access at home. So we're looking for some of our major textbooks, both print and online components. And then one of the resources that we're bringing before you, Defined STEM, is a fully online resource for teachers to use within, within the classroom. And you can print from that source as well.
I mean, and, all right, this one's not going to shock anybody, but I think one of the themes that personally I see, and not a big fan of the one-for-ones, I think some of that can be boat anchors. And it's very interesting, Mr. Rollins brought up about smart boards tonight. There certainly is, if you will, integrated technology in a lot of this. I think the one challenge I've got is, I'm not second guessing this in a sense, although again, it is obviously a lot of money, is more, what are you all, and when I say you all, I mean really the curriculum folks, you know, what is our plan for five years from now? And, you know, my opinion is, having looked at a number of options, that we have issues, as you well said a minute ago, of availability for all students. But also, how are we going to do this? Because things like certainly desk, but even laptops, you know, in favor of phones and other kinds of interfaces is becoming a big deal. So what I would more say is, I think the proverbial warning shot on the bow is, you know, not today, although I'm worried about today, it's five years from now. I think that's my challenge. If you want this, okay, but tell me how you're going to do this and what's a broader plan? Because we've got to do financially, it seems to me, and I'll just give you my conclusion so you don't, I'm not trying to be mysterious. I mean, if you talk to anybody who's under 25 or 30, this is computing power, not this. Right? I'll just tell you, my quick story is I went to Best Buy. And when I said I was buying a Microsoft operating system upgrade, you know, this young woman that couldn't have been more than 2021, looked at me like I had two heads and said, hey, I haven't been on a computer since I was in high school. And she made it sound like that was yesterday. But my point is that, that the kinds of interfaces that kids are using, and that poor Dr. Jarrett is, I've jawed at him now for five years, I think, on this one. So the poor guy's tired of me saying it, but for the curriculum folks, hey, this is new to you, is that, you know, I worry, that's why I ask about the electronic, is if we're going to put all this money into paper and the rest, I really do worry about it getting out of date in a lot of ways, as you well know. A textbook, the minutes it printed is two years old. So I think the only point is, I really think that is, part of the things that I'm getting at here is, what are we targeting? And what's your long-term plan on this? And how would you recommend and what would you recommend for funding the way that this interface is? And my last thing is, I will challenge all of you, if you've not seen chatbots and machine learning and what they can do, you are five years behind. And let me just tell you, when you see some of the sophistication of this, it's going to blow your mind. Because now, it's incredible, people want to talk on an interface, they don't want to type. That's the truth of it. And so all I'm saying is, I've been building to this one for five years, so here you go. I'm really challenging you. I'm really challenging you, if you want this, that you have to come up with a plan, and I'm looking at you and not just them, because you're the ones that are gonna have to come up with a plan. All right? Thanks.
Do you wanna respond to any of that? Okay.
Um, I would say at this time, we don't have a plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in terms of long-term for that, I mean, not that we're not working towards it, but the idea of we do not have a plan for moving towards fully digital, um, from the curriculum side, and I think we would really need to partner with our instructional technology side, um, to really move forward, um, with that, so.
Sorry.
No?
I, all I could say is, I hear you, but the clock's ticking. And I'm telling you, if you go out and you look, cause I've actually done a little bit of looking at this, it's pretty incredible what people are doing. And all I'm gonna say is, the machine learning, cause I can tell you at work, I, I will just tell you this, corporate America, if this was last year, everybody was planning to do AI and chatbot. This year, half have done chatbot, if you know what that is, and if you don't, hey, you better find out. But it's the machine learning part that's really gathering steam. And so over the next year or two, all the commercial companies, all of them, of any size, they're gonna be right in the middle of machine learning. And if you don't know what that is, and I'm gonna quiz you, I'm gonna give you about two weeks, and when I see you in the hall, I'm gonna quiz you on the difference between AI, machine learning, and chatbot. All right? All right, there's your challenge. Putting it right on the table, so.
All right. Any other board member questions? Ms. McCullough.
I don't think we had this conversation either at Ed Committee, and I'm, and I actually do appreciate Mr. Connor's comments, because we talked a little bit about tech, but not very much. Um, but one of the pieces was, both of the literacy, um, resources that we're adopting for K through five are, and, and you said they're not content-specific, but they are STEM and, um, Picture Perfect Science. So they're really, are they really science resources that we're using for literacy? Are we gonna have to buy, I mean, is this it? Or are we gonna have to have additional content resources coming forward? Because I, math would be different, but, you know, you've got science in here, I don't know if geography's in there, you've got STEM, so, um, and, and this is what we're using for literacy. We're not having, we're, we're not gonna be bringing forward additional resources for literacy per se.
So the one res-, the one additional resource that we'll be bringing forward next time is our text sets from Follett, which we did present at Ed Committee.
Well, you didn't have them. You just said that they were developing them, so.
So what, what Follett is doing for us is they have taken our, all of our essential learning outcomes and learning targets for our K five integrated literacy curriculum, and they are, um, working with our curriculum department in order to select texts directly aligned to teaching those standards. Um, so they're, um, working with us to make sure that we have one informational text and one piece of, one literature and fiction-based text for every essential learning outcome, as well as one mentor text that the teacher will use as more of a read aloud. Um, and so they are building that, and, um, we will have that at the next board meeting in terms of what those titles are, um, and bringing that forward for adoption as well.
They're actually gonna double asterix it, because they didn't have the recommendation for us tonight to bring forward.
Correct.
So just kind of a heads up on that. Um, all right. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, because it says, science, 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 and we keep talking literacy, 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 and what's the dovetail?
Mrs. Dedman, did you, you had your light on.
I was just ready.
Okay, you were just ready.
Yeah.
Um, I, I guess I, I wanna make a comment, and that is that, um, you know, in the past, and this probably was the way it was always done in a lot of school districts, is, you know, s- someone at the top, usually the chief academic officer, would, you know, choose what the curriculum tools were gonna be, and they'd say, here's what we're gonna teach, and here's the books, and here's all the resources, and whatever. I give you guys credit for at least having teacher involvement in the curriculum teams, and for coming up with objectives that you wanted the resources to accomplish, and that this is more of a, less of a top-down decision, um, to, um, to implement the integrated curriculum that we're after, and, um, so I give you credit for that, okay? Mr. Escobedo.
Yeah, for the most part, I think I second your comments. And, um, um, I guess one of the things that I kept going, and I'm just gonna make a comment about is, it's not, it's, you know, we're probably gonna be doing this again over many years on the road, but it's how do we, how do we measure what's working, what's not? So I think I kind of spoke about that a lot, but it's just, you know, just keep thinking about ways that we can say, yep, this resources tool, the way it was integrated, it, it paid off, and it was a return investment, or no, next time we select, you know, when we do this again, uh, this is what we learned, and there are other, better options. Um, it just, lessons learned within our, you know, curriculum department as to what's working, what's not, and how do we measure that? Cause I, I understand it's a tough one to measure, but I just encourage you guys to think about that as we go forward. That's it.
I, I know that in the Ed Committee, that you guys, the deans, talked about curriculum audits annually. If someone could address what that is, and that, um, you were gonna certainly monitor student growth and achievement as these tools were hopefully gonna improve on our number one priority, but, so if someone could address what a curriculum annual audit is?
Yes. Um, so we have, um, curriculum audits that we do with all of our, um, content areas in curriculum. We started them in two thousand fifteen, um, two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year, and we annually complete those. Um, and so as we are going through our five-year plan, um, each year, we complete that curriculum audit to see if we have moved closer to, um, you know, be, receiving the highest score on the rubric, and it's a one through five scale. Um, and, you know, five being that we are fully implementing, um, with, with fidelity and across our system. And so, um, we are making movement on those, and part of that is having resources provided for teachers and students to use, um, in order to learn, um, and engage with the standards.
Okay. One more final question is about, for me, is, I know that you're gonna have to spend money every year, probably. Can you kinda give a forecast of the next three to five years of what we think we're gonna need for curriculum resources?
So, um, rough estimate for, for next year is a little over two million dollars. Um, and the year bef-, the year after that as well, right around two million, or a little over two million dollars. Um, we have forecasted out for those two years at this time. Um, and that is based on our five-year plan, um, and the curriculum that we have, that we're currently developing, and that we know we will need resources for.
And these, these are our budgeted expenses, but I, I'll just reinforce Mr. Escobedo's request that it's a lot of money, and we wanna make sure that you guys are getting your bang for your buck, and it's, it's, uh, meeting the objectives and, and driving growth and achievement, and you're, and you're measuring that, so. Ms. McCullough.
I'm gonna piggyback onto your question about the money and projections, and of any of these resources, will have ongoing costs occurred in the next, cause some of them were good for like three years, some of them were good for longer, so, and, but we're not voting on those costs right now, right? Those will come next year, and the year after, and the year after, or are those considered as part of this total package?
So, um, for each of these, it's like, um, they each have, part of them is included, so like defines STEM as a three-year contract, so we are voting, I mean, we're looking at all three years. Integrated Math One is eight years, um, for the online. Picture Perfect Science is not a digital resource, it's a print resource, so there's no, um, recurring cost there. And then, um, the World Cultures and Geography is a six-year license for their online component.
So no additional costs?
No additional costs right now.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. This will come up for a vote then at our April tenth meeting, and, um, I would ask board members, if you have further questions later, that you direct them to either Dr. Jarrett or Ms. Dedman, um, for follow-up then. Okay? Someone here from bilingual? Okay. Sengage Learning, National Geographic Learning.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Fauzia Bakter from the bilingual department.
Okay.
In alignment with our curriculum department's adoption of integrated literacy in elementary, and as an effort to close the achievement gap for our bilingual students, I am here with, um, representing my bilingual department for the proposal, propose, uh, to propose the adoption of National Geographic Reach as a new integrated literacy resource for bilingual students. National Geographic Reach is a research-based program that is designed to move our English learners, the cognitive, academic, language proficiency, and reading independence through science and social studies content. This program aligns with WE the Standards, Next Generation Science Standards, the Common Course Study Standards, and our Essential Outcome Learning. The cost is four hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-two, and that will be paid through our funds eighteen and the ten. This will include two and a half days of staff training, and, um, mostly imprints material, differentiated materials, and some digital.
Questions or comments? Ms. McCullough.
I just want to, um, clarify, in your presentation to the Ed Committee.
Yes.
It clearly stated that all the funding would be through Title III.
Right, which is.
But that's not what is in our board report, so could you just update that?
Correct. Uh, when we sent the presentation and it turned into PDF, it, I couldn't change the updated information, I got that piece of information later on. So, um, during the presentation, I actually said that it would be mostly from Title III and some from ten. So it's actually sixty-three point fourteen percent from Title III and thirty-seven percent from Title X.
And I'm just curious about that shift, that change. So was that, um, just?
There is a certain amount that you can use from Title III into materials, and then the rest will be from Title X.
Is that because we had initially put things in Title III that shouldn't have been there? That's my question.
Um, throughout about a two-week time period, we learned a little bit more about the change from, um, having Title III as a standalone grant to having it rolled into our evidence-based funding, and how we then, uh, report that revenue and, and organize it in-house. And so while we were bringing this forward, we were engaging in conversations with finance department at the same time. And so in our final draft that came forward, it was clear to us that we needed to divide it, be, by percentage, between Fund Eighteen and Fund Ten, as that's how we're, um, allotting that revenue as it comes into our district as part of our EBF payments, bi-weekly.
Okay.
And I know I commented last week on the cost, and I know that just makes everybody's nails on a blackboard, because they think we should get whatever we need, but at the same time, I asked what, any of the other resources that you considered, what the cost was comparatively, so we can see that this is what you were gonna spend, no matter what, but we have no other costs, because you decided that this was the correct one, and that the other resources didn't need. I don't know, maybe there's two resources out there that you could get for the, the cost of this. So it, it, we are, you know, a, a, it's a lot of money.
It is true.
You know, we're, the ninety-one dollars for integrated literacy for our other students across the district versus the five twenty-three for our bilingual, plus the ninety-one, the six fourteen, you know, there's a disparity, and, and I will hope that you're gonna be able to show us the growth and how much of a difference this made in, in the lives of our students, cause we do want.
Right. As we went through the three presentations of the three vendors, it was really hard to find the curriculum that has everything, aligns with standards, content-based, and helps with language. This program is basically mostly imprints, and because, um, the, you don't want something that's technology-dependent with the internet on and off, and we don't have those pieces of, um, computers or iPads at home, not available. And we want to make sure teachers are actually teaching kids one-on-one or in small groups, communicating with them under both the, the four domains of language, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. So National Geographic Reach was a hundred percent devoted by five ESL Task Force ESL teachers and the administrators, but mostly we depended on their voting. They, they strongly, strongly, um, voted, and, um, it was not, not just randomly, we have ESL guidelines, and then we went over them, and, uh, our essential learning outcomes, we went all, we went all, uh, we, we went over them, and they a hundred percent devoted and feel strongly about this program.
So what's the resistance, Michael, you should be, to the technological piece of it? I understand the home piece, but we have a lot of students who are being very successful in programs where they're not, um, and, and I'm talking about ombudsman and other places where they're doing online learning, because it can keep up with where they're at. If they're, if there's an area that they're doing well, it moves them forward, if not, they can move them back. And so, um, this is the day and age, and I'm not sure that we can have a resistance to that. That would be a number, so go ahead and answer that.
One of the weakest areas of our students would be speaking. We wanna make sure teachers are actually working on speaking piece. Technology would not be able to do this. Um, one of the access, one of the domains of the language is speaking, and we actually test the kids on speaking. So if you put the kids on computer and just say, oh, they will be doing interactive, by the way, National Geographic has that piece, has the technology piece, interactive activities, where they learn how to write or, um, vocabulary and all this. But you want to make sure that teachers are actually working with bilingual students on questions and answers, and how to think, and how to process, and how to speak about their experience and make connection. This is hard to be done by computer. And, um, a- as I mentioned before, we, we have those five, um, levels of language. We have entering, beginning, developing, expanding, and bridging. Now, you don't have those students in one level to meet all their needs at once. You have to meet students at their level and take, then take them up to different level, higher level. That's what differentiation is. So we needed to make sure that we have books that are actually adaptable, that you can use for kids, newcomers, low readers, medium readers, and high, and high readers. This program offers all of these books. And the technology piece is there, it, it existed, but it's, we don't want to rely and completely depend on the technology piece. We want to give them something to go home to study with. We want to give them something to read out loud, to build other skills, other than just computer skills, but also other skills.
And I appreciate that explanation very much. Um, so the piece on your technological, uh, does this cover for how many years? I mean, do we have ongoing costs, or this technological piece with National Geographic, how long does it cover?
I will follow up with you, but at least five years, at least.
So no additional costs for five years?
No additional costs. As a matter of fact, the account, student accounts comes for free. It comes with the package. When we buy the anthology, every anthology book that we buy for students comes with the online account. Even teacher's edition come, come, uh, teacher editions also come in the package for free. And there is, um, three percent off shipping and handling, I mean, we had a lot of talks with the vendors to give us discounts, so this is the least that we could come up with them. And, um, regarding the question like, three years or five years, we have to look at our students at where they at. Are they newcomers, low income, their language is low, or are they in the middle where they're developing language, or are they actually on the edge of exiting the program? Now, kids exit the program with a score of four point eight. We need to make sure first, so in three years, let's say in two years, according to Jim Cummins in his book about differentiation for students, he said, from six to two years, students acquire language that's for basic communication. Now, it takes five to seven years for CAOP, which is cognitive proficiency. So it does take time. Now, Mr. Escobedo, I appreciate the question that you asked me last week that made me go back and research more to find out more about what could be done in three years. So yes, we can move them fast, it's not impossible, but depends on two things. One, how much of education did they have in their country? How much did they know about content in their native language? This is one big factor. The other factor is how much of a rigor education are we giving them? So this program is actually content and language, both of them together. We really need to close, narrow that gap of education, and we need our kids to do better, so we need to give them something that really helps them, not only with communication, playground language, but we also need the content and academic language.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, this will be presented at our April tenth board meeting for a vote. The last item on the agenda under new stuff is, um, the board policy on committees, and I, I put this on our agenda, because there is an interest to take a look at, um, can we gain some efficiencies, um, in restructuring? And this would require a board policy revision, because right now, that board policy states that we have three standing committees, uh, which are Ed, Finance, and Ops. And, um, should we, um, think about, um, rolling maybe Finance into Ops and having just two, which is how I worded it in here? Um, and, um, basically, I, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing it up for- And basically, I'm bringing it up for everyone's discussion and input tonight and see what direction we want to go. Because we usually restructure in April. I guess the only thing I would say is that if we do something with, particularly with Finance, that it might make more sense to, whatever we do, do it at the start of the fiscal, or, you know, the school year of July, rather than doing it in April, but, you know, whatever. So I'm open to discussion, and I'm just going to open the floor up. Ms. McCullough.
So since we're having this conversation, which I think is a good conversation, one of the issues that, that we started to have this was because we've got a couple committees that were having quorum issues. And so spreading, and spreading our board members out across three committees versus two committees, where we would at least have three members on each committee would help the quorum issue, but it would also help the informational gap that we have because of being spread across committees. But after having this conversation with Ken, I started thinking about something that was brought to us. I think Mr. Vosberg was the, Dr. Vosberg was the first one who brought it to us. Lori, you might have been too. And that was a conversation about a whole different committee structure. So since we're talking, I think that I'd like to ask some opinion on, you know, where we are currently, where we, returning back to our two-committee structure with Finance being a subcommittee under Ops. And the third option would be something called Committee of the Whole. And I asked Ms. Holdley if she'd talked to us about what the Committee of the Whole. I think it's just such a great segue, because Mr. Connor has all these questions about, you know, what happened at the Ed Committee. I have questions about the Ops Committee. But if you had a Committee of the Whole, and we were doing all the work together here on the floor, and I need to give you the floor to tell everybody what it is, but then we'd be all on the same playing field when it comes to decision-making. We would be going more into depth, not during the business meetings that we have twice a month. When it comes to voting on an item, I've been told that if it is presented at a Committee of the Whole, then it could come for just the second reading at the regular committee meeting. So that would save us time. You don't have to have committee reports. That would save us time. The presentations by everybody, that would save us time. So we really could focus on what we're doing as a board, business-wise, and then do the deeper work on an additional meeting. So could I ask Ms. Holdley to speak to what a Committee of the Whole is and does and how it operates?
I don't think I have much more to add than what you just did. It really, it does allow a deeper focus of the board and a much more free flow of conversation at a Committee of the Whole, rather than a really structured setting, as is the board meeting, especially with the board president keeping the Robert's Rules of Order in line here.
Mr. Connor.
One quick question on the Committee of the Whole is, if somebody could speak to how you would visualize the implementation. So would it be one formal meeting and one Committee of the Whole, or two formal meetings and one large Committee of the Whole for everything? What would be the structure?
Yeah. The way that it, the way I personally envision it working, because you already have a commitment, each of you do, for three meetings a month, correct? So you have your one committee meeting as well as the two board meetings. And I think it's an awful lot already to ask of you for that level of commitment, so I would not see it personally. I mean, it would be up to you. You could have one every night, I guess, if you really wanted to.
Oh, boy.
But--
You'd have to be here if the board's here as a whole.
Turn off her microphone.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Yes. But I would see it just limited to one Committee of the Whole meeting and then two board meetings. And you really need the two business meetings to address a lot of the standard business that you have.
Okay. So the visualization is that would the Committee of the Whole then address all topics, education, operations, and finance in the one meeting?
You, typically what happens in the Committee of the Whole is that you address the items that are coming before the board in the upcoming meeting or meetings, in this case, so it would be the upcoming two meetings. So that would allow you the deeper dive, the presentations, the conversations. Now, that being said, you could add additional items, but that's really what the focus of a Committee of the Whole is.
Dr. Vosberg, I want to ask you, because you, you had some background knowledge about how this works, so can you pull any of that out of your brain?
I don't know if I'd say background knowledge. I had opinions.
Oh, you had opinions. Okay.
My, yeah, my opinion would be, I think the Committee of the Whole would serve the board a little better, as far as, as Mrs. McCullough and Mr. Connor already addressed. If you're not at the Ed Committee meeting, but you have questions, we're repeating a lot of the same work for everybody. Board members, committee members, staff members. So that would be one, one option is to streamline that work. I also think that the community involvement is important, but at the committee level, I think elected officials are more, more prepared to provide feedback and input before we move things to the full board.
Mr. Connor, did you have some other thoughts?
Well, in the short term, for the actual policy change, one of the suggestions is this, that, and I do remember, because it was like this for a while, is that the structure of the subcommittee, although I guess, I think the reason it went to its own committee is it, there was enough line items, if you will, to have it be its own committee. And so one of the things that I expressed to several board members was, if you combine, let's say, operations and finance, already for operations, it can easily be an hour and a half because of, it's not just level of detail. There's discussion, and there's really a lot of topics. When I summarize, I mean, a lot of those discussions are quite lengthy. And my gut check is, with finance, it's probably very similar. So the amount of items that would come just on the operations and finance side is really quite lengthy. And in education, I mean, when I look at things online and talk to some of you offline, there's a lot of detail there. I mean, education alone, from my point of view, has two or three large subsets at least. And so I'm, I like the idea of the Committee of the Whole. I guess I'm trying to visualize how it would work, to be honest, because I think, I'm not so sure having one meeting of the Committee of the Whole, right? If you think of everything that's coming before Ed and operations today, and I'll speak at least for operations, there's a lot of things that come month after month. And there's status. And really, custodial is one, really all the planning for everything from roofs to HVAC, status on facilities, there's always things being brought up, there's transportation, there's food service. I mean, my point would be that there'd have to be a mechanism, and I hear what Dr. Vosberg said, that there is something about having this as a Committee of the Whole, but I'm trying to think through the logistics of it. And that's really where I'm struggling, because I like the concept, always liked Committee of the Whole. I think the thing that I'd say is, we're going to have to put some thought into it, and if we are seriously going to do this and have it to be implementable by July 1, I mean, today's what, the 20th? And so that's not a whole lot of time to come up with something, how it would work. And so let me ask this. Has anybody, either on the administration or board side, thought about how Committee of the Whole would be implemented, let alone how, you know, on the, on the short-term side, anybody thought about how operations and finance could do it in under, say, four hours? And I guess we'd all be willing to come in our jammies if we had, you know, treats and other stuff.
Dr. Chair?
Somehow, I can't imagine that happening.
So I would be happy to take that task to, rather than trying to vote on this policy change at the next board meeting, we do have some time as people serve out their terms. If perhaps we could have a deadline of the second meeting in April, I think our cabinet would be happy to work with Mrs. Holdley and come up with a draft, an iteration for the board to consider, so you are not considering Committee of a Whole as an abstract, but as opposed to the abstract, be able to compare it to an actual idea that we could put forth. This is not something that's been driven by the administration in this case, but I think we would be happy to sink our teeth into what we think that might look like. One of the opportunities I see, just the sheer volume of time it does take every meeting to do a committee report, if we just heard it, if we all heard the same thing, that alone would create some efficiency. I think standing reports would not only have to fall in the Committee of a Whole meeting, standing reports could be sprinkled into the three meetings that we have every month. So, and then we could also take a fresh look at what our, our update schedule looks like when we talk about our strategic. So I think it's a great time to reflect, and we would be happy, I think, to Dr. Munson, who I think would be our thought leader in this exercise, is nodding her head. So I would love for us to have the opportunity to present this to you at the second meeting. I would be reluctant to commit to the first meeting in April--
Yeah, sure.
--just because we have the--
Break.
--a number of folks that are taking some holiday time. So my suggestion would be the second meeting in April, we could give you something to chew on, and that would give us a fresh chance to continue the conversation, rather than at the theoretical level. You could compare an idea with what we currently do, and then we would expect that it would iterate from there, and we would eventually land on either a modified version of the current system, or perhaps something more like the Committee of a Whole. I don't think we have a strong bias as a team, other than we want to give the board options to chew on.
Could I ask--
So, Mr. Connor, typically, a Committee of the Whole addresses the items that would be coming before the board. And so what I heard you talk about are a lot of status reports, things like that, which can be addressed in a whole different manner, whether it's through the superintendent's weekly update or through your strategic planning meetings, because a lot of, at least what I heard you say, I haven't been to a lot of the operations meetings, but it was a lot of updates and status reports.
The one comment, well, a couple things. Let me ask this. I think, you know, one of the questions would be, and I'll get back to that in one second, is, do I hear you correctly, Dr. Jared, and you're thinking that we may want to rethink the content of the actual board meetings as well?
I think we would approach this like we were building it from scratch, but I think the parameters we would use would be, we would try to accomplish as much as we possibly are already accomplishing, listening to what board members have commented on tonight. I think we would limit it to the three-meeting structure, because I think that's, that would mean staff time as well as board time would be consistent with the commitment. I think those are excellent parameters. And from there, we would just give you a draft of something to consider. We'd get it at the first meeting in April. We'd listen to all of your feedback on that, and we'd, I think from there, decide if, hey, everyone hates this idea, we're just going to stick with what we have, or something very similar to what we have, or if you start to kind of like it, but you want some changes. I think it's a lot easier to react to something tangible than for us to speculate. So I think it's great that we got this conversation going. I think we'd be happy to give you a draft. I think the parameters would be three meetings, one Committee of a Whole, two meetings, as we have now, and see what that would look like, and we'll let you weigh in from there.
Yep. The only reason I brought that up is that, and I hear Mrs. Holdley on the comment, but the thing that I'll say is, you know, status you can get through a sheet. But a lot of times, it's really about questions, and especially when there are programs. And again, I'll pick on, say, transportation and some of the rest. So it's not, even with facilities, it's, you know, are there issues here? And that's actually fairly well settled down. But at certain points, you get a lot of questions about status would be kind of the point. And I'm not saying no. I'm just saying that, so I wouldn't think of it as just rote, and it quite went that way. And the only reason I brought up about the content of the board meetings is, if part of your intent is that there are certain things that we all hear, the question would be, is there value in repurposing some pieces of the current board sessions to do some of that? That's kind of my--
Ball on the table.
Okay, good. Because that's, to me, that would be fruitful to rethink both that as well as the Committee of the Whole.
Mr. Escobedo.
Yes, I guess just a couple of comments. You know, not knowing a lot about Committees of the Whole, it seems like a good next idea, concept to try. I mean, it's, we're all trying to be more efficient here with our times and everyone else. At first thought, it seems like, yeah, I guess seeing something would be, because often I, you know, I'm not able to attend a lot of the other committee meetings, and sometimes not even, many times not even watch them, stream them. So this would allow us to all be on the same page. I mean, we all have a different availability and so forth. So I like the fact that this would allow us all to be on the same page, more in tune and all here, and everything is being discussed and presented. I hear Mr. Connor's concern about the, the time issue and availability to dig and understand some of the issues a little bit better. I mean, just like in Ed Committee, we spent, last meeting, we spent quite a lot of time. So I see that side as well. But at the same time, I guess, I guess the comment I was going to say is, it's worth a try, and maybe I guess interested in seeing some type of outline or how this would work.
So the, to your comments, Mr. Escobedo, I think, and to what Mr. Connor said as well, I think the parameters will be, we'll consider two meetings, Committee of a Whole. All current topics are on the table. We will also look at our strategic meetings that we've done. We will also look at how we can utilize my weekly update. I think it all will be under consideration, and we will give you something to react to. And we fully expect that that feedback will modify it, but it'll, we'll give you something tangible to react to at the separate second meeting in April.
And one quick comment, just to close my comments here. The other kind of intangible part is, when we have the committee meetings there, they tend to be a little less formal.
Sure.
A little more conversation-based. With Committee of the Whole, that may be a different culture, and I know, you know, part of the Ed Committee allows administration and us to have a little more of a discussion base. So it's a little different culture. Just think about that as well.
I guess looked out that way.
I was actually going to make the same comment, but with the idea that I would encourage, if we do arrive at that Committee of the Whole format, that we try to keep those meetings more conversational than the other board meetings.
True.
I have found that interaction to be really useful, that I get to the core of an idea a lot faster at the committee meetings, and that I would, you know, not only try to keep it conversational for that benefit, but we do have these different perspectives of education, of finance, and operations, that we get to hear all those conversations at once. And I think the depth of that conversational content will be really helpful for the board. I think it'll also be really helpful for the cabinet or any of the team leaders who are presenting, because they are going to have to be prepared to ask, answer questions from those different perspectives. It may help them join their ideas a little better in formulation, so that when they get here, they're going to be really, really well-baked ideas. So I would hope that we can keep that conversational environment intact.
Good suggestion. Mr. Owens.
Yeah, I'm not wedded to any of these models, and I'm, you know, I'm willing to try anything. I share some of Mr. Connor's concerns, you know, and I'm, and I'm thinking, I'm just thinking to myself, that there may be a little bit of a difference between what's gone on in the Education Committee, which maybe has been more focused on action items for the board. I mean, my background was in Ops and now in Finance. We do get a lot of these sort of reports. And I will tell you that you learn a lot by being there and being able to ask questions and having an interaction with the administration. The report that I gave on our healthcare costs, that's a one-slide PowerPoint presentation. You wouldn't have gotten anything that I told you about tonight. That came out of a discussion with the administration, the consultant. But that's valuable information as a board member. So that's what I'm struggling with here, is we have those, you know, currently, we have a structure that gives, that allows us to have those conversations and get that information. And then you've got a couple of committee members who have it in detail. You synthesize it and distill it down for the board in a five- or 10-minute committee report. If we do a Committee of the Whole, and how long are those meetings going to be? Or do we jettison that and then lose that opportunity to get that information? So that's, that's one of my concerns. The other, not really concern, but I'll just say, I do think there is a benefit to involving community members. say, I do think there is a benefit to involving community members for two reasons, both pushing out and pulling in. The community members of the committees do, can act as ambassadors to the school district, to the community, who have information about the school district. And yes, they, they, you know, maybe we ask better questions most of the time, but I've certainly been at committee meetings where I've gotten a different perspective, listening to people who are not the elected officials or not the policy gurus, who are just asking the question that the average Joe Blow is going to ask. And sometimes we lose sight of that, of how other people look at what we're doing and how we need to be explaining ourselves to those people. So those are, you know, like I said, I'll try anything and I can actually see some advantages to the Committee of the Whole, which other people have alluded to. I actually do see those advantages. But I just want us not to lose sight of those two issues and to at least think about them.
Yeah, I was, I'll jump on that because it's, my comment is, when Mr. Rollins and I got on the board seven years ago, I think, one of the community concerns was transparency of the board and transparency of the administration to the customers, our, our community members, our parents, and whatever. So I, I just want to make sure that if we do make a change, that we still have the avenue for the community to, to be transparent with them and to allow us to hear their, their issues and their concerns. So, Ms. McCullough?
I know that Ms. Holdley said you can have ad hoc community members if we choose to do that. So as the administration sits down and looks at some options and has some conversation. But I'm going to say that I, it is not my understanding that we would solely focus in the Committee and the Whole on items that we're bringing, bringing, we're being brought forward for action at the board level. Because I think that the information and that comes to Ed Committee, you know, say, the annual report on, you know, special education or early childhood, all these things, which should be of interest to everyone because we're all interested in achievement, and that really should be the focus of those, is how, what they're doing to try to move that achievement needle. But I think it's going to be about pacing. You know, how do you continue to bring that information forward? How do you continue to get your status updates? How do you continue to have your reports that, that really, and you do a great job of bringing that forward to us, Mr. Rollins, but, you know, it is better if you hear the whole conversation or the whole presentation. So I think that it's incumbent upon us, or administrator, however we do that, to come up with a schedule such that it is, that we can still have some of those in-depth conversations. It's not just about action items, because that's not my perception of what that Committee of the Whole is. And I don't know how long they take. I mean, we're here at 5:00 till 9:00. We're here for four hours. I would hope not four hours, but it's, you know, it's new territory for us. And so I think, and you have the benefit of having, you wouldn't have to have committee chairs, which would be lovely. We'd just all be on that same playing field as well. And Ken can just push us along because he does such a good job of that. Watch him cut me off.
All right. So, Dr. Munson, it's up to you now. Okay. All right. Okay. So, yeah.
We don't have anything else.
There you go. Very good. Good discussion. And we'll, we'll wait to hear an update, whatever that is, 24th of April, maybe, something like that, rounding there. So, okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved. Second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same side. We are adjourned at 9:10.